We're going to get ready to start the meeting here. You would like to take your seats. All right, because this was announced as a planning commission meeting, it's a special meeting, we have to conduct it in our usual order. So we are, I'm going to call the meeting to order and I'm going to call for roll call. For the planning commissioners. Here, of course. All right, so we do have a public appearance here because it was on the agenda. So the public appearances are public comments on matters which are not on the agenda but may relate to an agenda item. Public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to subject matter of the jurisdiction of this legislative body. Hateful, violent, and threatening speech is impermissible, public comment, as it disrupts the conduct of the public meeting. This is a warning that if a member of the public attending this meeting remotely violates the Brown Act, then they will be muted. So is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments which aren't on these agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the orders of business, which is the Housing Element Amendment Review. This is a workshop, so it's going to be a little more casual. I'm going to turn this over to the Planning Director, Anna Jeanette, and she's going to take it from here.
Thank you, Chair LaPage. So first of all, I really want to welcome everyone and also identify that our esteemed mayor has just walked into the building. Thank you for attending. So the intent of this meeting is to have an informative discussion at a more intimate level so that we can work through potential amendments that the AHA Group has identified through the continuous work they have done over the last, what, year or two? Year? Seems like more. So as you notice, even the format in the seating has been set up in a way where it's much more intimate and a lot less formal. And the key goal, and this is a theme that you'll hear throughout, is the importance of community involvement. So I do want to thank you for your time in participating. There we go. Okay, a few housekeeping items. The restrooms are located right outside of these doors, and there are another set of restrooms located on the upper floor. There are light snacks and water available should you want to partake. There are also a set of papers on the back table that has a handout and questions and a questionnaire. We'd really appreciate it if you take the time to grab those. You can add notes so that if you have questions, you can remember what you wanted to ask. Also, if you had questions that you might not want to ask in person but want us to have, be really helpful if we collect your worksheets from you. There is also a sign-in sheet at the back table. You want to be put on a mailing list, and we don't already have your information. Simply put your name and your email address. So with introductions, I would say that stating that there was a huge community involvement is an understatement. There are many volunteer hours that have been spent by the residents that make up the AHA Group. They put in a lot of time, effort, commitment, and really were involved in this process in a very thoughtful manner, and we as staff highly appreciate that. So the members of the AHA Group that we have with us today is Nancy, Hans, Tim, Adam, Victoria, Chrissy, and members of the staff, Ms. Marnie. She is the backbone of the Housing Element, Housing Element Implementation and the draft amendment. Not here today is Mr. Brandon Swanson. He's the Assistant City Administrator. Unfortunately, he is out sick today, so you have to deal with me instead. City officials, we have Planning Commission here, as well as the mayor. So just to go over what to expect today, we will provide a recap of the process that has been made. Each AHA team member will present one of the four programs, which includes ADUs, hotels, downtown, and churches. Then after the presentation, we'll have a question and answer period, and you'll be able to ask your questions and hopefully receive some answers, or we could take down notes to think about how we can address your concerns. And then again, you have the ability to also be involved through the worksheets that we will collect. Your input is very important, and we want to ensure that the Housing Element Amendment meets the vision and the needs of the community. So we are looking forward to collecting your feedback. So why are we here and where are we going? A little background on the Housing Element. The Housing Element was adopted in 2004. It included two city-owned sites that incorporated 149 affordable units. After adoption of the Housing Element, staff and the city received comments and concerns from the residents. And that subsequently, the council, in response, provided direction to city staff to work with the residents, which is now the AHA Group. And the intent behind that was to make sure there was community involvement, and what we came up with was consistent with what the community wanted as a whole. And with that resolution from the city council, we're directed to look at replacing the city sites with better options for the city, and that's part of the programs that we are we are covering today, which is finding the replacement sites. Once, I am plugged in. Once everything is identified and we're ready to certify, the city council will adopt the Housing Element Amendment and will bring it to the state for certification. Brief overview, what is a Housing Element? The Housing Element is required by state law to be part of the general plan, and the intent with that is to have a cooperation between local governments and the private sector to ensure that the state housing goals are achieved at a local level. There are certain components that are required in a Housing Element. One is the site's inventory lists, identifying sites where developments could be feasible. Programs and incentives are also part of the required components, and that is to ensure that developments actually do occur within the cycle. And I briefly touched over the process to adopt and amend the Housing Element. So with that, I will hand it over. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. I agreed to weigh in on this part. As one of the folks who tried to propel us toward this amendment, I want to just say to start off that, this has already been said a little bit, but even though I've been volunteering for this community since I arrived here, and about 20 years ago, like PTA, Planning Commission, Council, et cetera, I have never seen such a hardworking, devoted, dedicated group. I'm floored by it. I feel very privileged to work with everybody every week, more than once a week, often. So as you see, we have been doing that since the Housing Element was adopted in early 2024. We had these kind of goals, general goals, to preserve what is scarce public land. Folks probably know that in Carmel-by-the-Sea residential development is allowed on almost every type of property, and so with the exception of cultural and parklands. And so those are those sort of special gems that we wanted to preserve. And we also thought that distributing the housing through the village would help us with human scale. It would help us to honor the vision of the town founders, or this traditional land use plan that they set up for us, which happens to be very conducive to small properties and integrated housing. We also recognize that we have a problem with shrinking population and services and nurses and medical attention, all sorts of things that could be addressed by a more balanced approach to affordability. And the process has been fascinating for so many reasons, but also, I think, just interestingly enough, one of the lessons, at least that I learned, is that it's not just about physically distributing folks and facilities through the town, but also distributing income levels and making sure that mix is not too concentrated in any way. That was sort of a lesson for me. We have, in the last several months, few months, been holding these bi-weekly meetings with HCD. And again, it's been just such a pleasure. We have probably tested their flexibility in a way because the state believes that they have set this up to have general default rules that might apply, like one-size-fits-all to LA or San Jose or whatever. But they also think that they have put in allowances for special situations like ours. And we have found that that is the case, that when we talk to them, they say, you know, we have a way to help you work through this because we have this other way of considering a proposal for special situations like yours. So it's become a real collaboration, I think. And we've learned, they like this, we like this, that the things that folks think of are constraints for this town compared to a place like San Jose turn out to be just good opportunities for a different approach to housing. So, yeah, I think the result has been that we are going to get, we think, we're optimistic we're going to get a Carmel custom solution and not something that feels passed down from Sacramento. You'll hear this, you'll hear this as we go, when we go through the four programs, that we think we're well on our way to getting at least 149 units, which was what was the troubling part about the submitted element. We also think that we will have no problem beating the deadlines that were on the other path, the path that was not as favorable. So in other words, we don't talk about this this much in this presentation, but we are on schedule to do everything we'd like to do in time to not have to do the other plan. We also think that the approach we're taking, which again is much more in honor of the traditions of the town, will set us up for a multi-year, multi-cycle approach so that we don't have to panic next time when Cycle VII comes along, because we'll have laid the groundwork for a type of land use that makes more sense for the town. And also, one thing we've noticed is because we have a lot of involved citizens here, and we've been in, you know, in touch with so many residents, we are trying, although this is not the top priority, when we can, to solve other problems along the way. So if we see that there's an issue that can also be benefit, that also can benefit from our housing solution, then that's good. That's a win-win. You'll hear some of that. And so overall, we think we're going to have a better, better plan, and you'll see that. We want to make clear that the first time we presented this back in August, first of all, the room was packed. We introduced what we thought were our sort of intuitions about the pathways we would follow. Right now, we're more in the middle of it, not totally at the end of it. So we recognize that we're trying to respect everyone's time today and just buzz through this stuff. But we may be talking past some of you all who weren't there at the first meeting, and even if you were there, please feel free to ask even silly questions if you think they are about clarifying terminology or whatever, because we're trying to balance between speed and, and just so we can get out to you guys and hear what you have to say as soon as possible. We really do appreciate you all being here and being, I don't know, basically touching us back to the reality of what the community is thinking and feeling about this stuff. So with that, let's see, can I advance this? No. Oh, I can. Okay. So this is one of the programs. I'm just going to remind everyone that this is proposed. It has not been in front of the Planning Commission until today. It has not been in front of the city council yet. So these are just ideas that we are developing, and we're looking for feedback on them. And the first person to talk about it is Nancy about the ADU track.
Thank you, Victoria. Hello. Make sure that the mic is working here. Alrighty, next. Let's get the slides up. All right. So the first thing that we needed to do in the world of ADUs was to look at what was presented in our Housing Element and refresh, as the title of this slide indicates, update our numbers, because they were really understated in the Housing Element. As you can see here, there were 34 units directed in the bucket for ADUs in that Housing Element. And through revisiting what we've actually been permitting, we see a trend change from the 4.5 units per year to the 8.4 units per year. That's taking the five-year window from 19 to 23, totaling them, and then doing the math. And updating that information really brings us a lift, which is great news. And with the work that we're doing on and/or proposing to further escalate the work that you guys are all doing by building ADUs, we expect to be able to deliver an incremental amount of 15 additional units. So we're going from 34 to 60 with the actual numbers over the five years, and then adding another 15 because of the promotional work and an extra muscle that we're putting behind the concept of ADUs. So as you know, state laws have really been focused in on ADUs and making that a smoother, more efficient process, things like making sure that once you've got a valid permit, that it gets blessed within 60 days, that type of thing, which really helps the efforts that you might have as an individual property owner. And you note here on this chart that there are actually 54 of the units over the last three years that were conversions, conversions of a garage, a studio, a basement, that type of thing. So those are projects that we'd like to continue to encourage because they're minimally disruptive. You just need to make sure that those units are up to snuff with health and safety codes and/or address the incremental requirements that are a part of making something an official ADU. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. But every ADU counts to our numbers, and what you choose to do with your ADU, if it's used by a family member, if it's rented out, which is clearly of strong preference, we'd like to get more residents in our village. But those residents could be a relative that you're renting your ADU to. Could be that you're building an ADU, you're going to live in the ADU, and then you're going to rent out your primary residence. There's all sorts of combinations that will occur in this mix of ADUs. Sure we're in there? All right. So then the next area here is what are the programs that we're playing with and recommending that we move forward with? So one of those is extending prioritization, and this is a proposal, it's not cast in stone yet, so we've got work to do, to receive priority water credits to anyone building a new ADU and/or wanting to get it legalized as an ADU that you might have stretched what was applicable to your particular property. But to prioritize water credits and reduce the permit fees that would be involved in sanctioning your ADU. And that would come with a multi-year, is that five years, is that seven years? You know, that's to be determined, but to apply a deed restriction so that we really do deliver some affordability in this ADU category. Another area is for those of you who maybe haven't been in a mode of having rental property, building a relationship with the Carmel Foundation to do renter-match services, because they do that with their own properties now. They've got 50 units, and that they extend that they own and that they operate. But they could do that pre-screening of candidates for you. And at least this is in a discussion format. So again, it's not cast in stone, but the objective of that is to be able to guide and filter out potential candidates as renters for your ADU. So that's a program that we're looking forward for more input from you. There's also the concept of amnesty. Now, many cottages out there, and specifically I found three in Q4, that were against real estate listings that were not permitted. So they were out there, they existed, but let's make them legal. Get them validated through the health and safety codes, and then get them into the formal register of being an ADU. So amnesty is one aspect. Another way to uncover those, if people don't want to opt in, is volunteer and say, hey, I've got one of these, is through when properties resell, to actually require pre-sales inspection. This is not something that this town does, but it's really common in our area. And then, of course, we want to do further education and awareness. Make sure that our website is populated with the right kind of tools. Make sure that the realtors and the architects are all armed and loaded for conversations around the ADU topic and moving forward on those. There's a lot of sub-elements to what can be done in here, from videos and handouts and flyers, checklists, all of those things that really kind of make it less a mystery, less of a black hole that you could walk into. And we have published a Considering ADU in Carmel-by-the-Sea. This guide exists, and it's got a revision that's like almost ready to be pushed out as well, because we're shooting at a moving target called Sacramento. So a new one will be coming shortly. So please, you know, grab this off of the website, or I can point you to it. We can send it out as another reminder URL in the Friday Letter, whatever works. All right. So those are the programs that will help us uplift our number of 60 to number of 75, if we can put the right muscle behind them. All right. And then, as was mentioned upfront, we're going to be going into some questions at the end, and look for your feedback. But I'm going to call out one example. There are many folks here who have, might and/or members of our village, whether they're here full-time or part-time, but they have a second home here. And I see that it is common in other areas that are implementing ADUs, especially in a high-rent district, which we call a 5-4, of course, that they Okay, so that's the next one. But I just wanted to finish my description on that question, which is that often, it makes good sense for a property owner to have an ADU and to have someone living there. So they've got life on their property, they've got somebody watching out after their property. So that's a model that we should encourage, because again, that provides residence to the neighborhood, it provides services to the primary owner, that type of thing. So we'll look forward to going through some more of these questions in the Q and A. So next is my other half, Tim, to talk about hotels.
Good evening. Thank you all for attending. Really appreciate it. So just let me set up some notes here. So I am going to advance the slide. Okay. So I'm going to be talking about this hotel program. It's actually, is that working okay? Okay. There's actually two programs in the Housing Element. One is hotel conversions to employee housing, and that's 1.1. D as in dog. And then there's this other one that we're going to be talking about, which is a transfer of hotel rights to another location. And it's then taking the existing hotel and converting that to affordable housing. So I'm going to kind of walk through that. We're actually looking at enhancing, it's in the Housing Element currently, we're looking at enhancing it. And like I said, the focus is on the conversion of older, underperforming hotels into mixed-income affordable housing. And then to incentivize the transfer of the hotel keys, those hotel rights, to other sites. And I know there's a few that were here at the last community meeting. There was a lot of input, a lot of feedback about, hey, if you do this, if we do this, let's make sure that we're looking at small hotels, scattered sites, you know, that will help protect the character of the village. And question? That's a great question. I'll get to it on the next slide. Thank you. So that was real strong feedback, because initially, in the Housing Element, for this program, they only identified hotels that were eligible for it, had to be greater than five acres. And there's only five hotels in town that are greater than five acres. So our challenge is to, with HCD and as Victoria said, you know, they'd been very receptive to working with us, you know, and getting creative to find out programs that will fit in our village. And we were able to convince them to look at, you know, more than just those five hotels. So I'll get into that right now. Okay. So like I said, we've been out, we've actually, it's been quite a journey, and a fun one though, too. I've been working with Mark Watson, who's the general manager of Inns by the Sea, you know, and a great, you know, expert in hospitality management. So he wasn't, he's not able to be here tonight, but he's been really instrumental in helping us through this program. And one of the efforts is we've met with a few hotel owners, affordable housing developers, and hotel developers. And once they understand the program, they're like, oh, this really makes sense. We're really interested. And I'll get into the details in a second here, because it's kind of unique. And then when we talked to HCD, we were able to, you know, get them to support our unique approach. And we needed to put together a methodology for how do we identify underperforming hotels, and then how do we set the criteria for the amount of affordable housing that we think we can get out of this? And so we went through that process with them, and they said, that sounds interesting, you know, good, go for it. So then on the accomplishments, like I said earlier, we were able to convince HCD that, you know, we had viable opportunities in properties that were on less than five acres. And so that was like a big win, because that opened up the five that we originally had to 42 now that are in the mix. No, no, it opened up the eligibility of hotels, the original, there were five hotels that were part of this program by going, oh, under .5. Oh, sorry. Okay. 5.5. Okay. Thanks, Hans. That was really, Hans was all over the .5 thing earlier throughout the program. So then we put together a financial model here, and actually, the city actually did this for us. No, we did this one. I'm sorry, Mark put this together. He took a sample of a 15-room hotel and went through the pro forma, and it penciled out with a really high rate of return on the investment. I think it was like, it was around 53%. And it was high because there are two pieces, there's two assets, really. really. There's the, the property that gets converted into affordable housing. And then there are the hotel keys that you receive as a part of that, that are worth some money that you, you can sell to a hotel developer. So you end up really selling the building twice. And what that does is I think in the pro forma, it was buying a 15-room hotel for about $4 million, converting it up to, you know, standards for affordable housing was another million and a half. So you're into it for 5.5 million, but then you could sell it for around 3 million. And then the hotel keys were worth another four and a half million. So you came up with a, you know, an investment of five and a half million and, you know, your turn was you're, you're getting payback of 8.5 million on it. So anyhow, that was that. And then, then the, the city went through a process to help identify the underperforming hotels. And they've got data that, you know, they took from 2023, 2024 TOT data. It's totally anonymous. I mean, they did the work and then they provided us with information that said, here's how it, you know, stratifies out. And we don't know the names of the hotels. Alls we have are the rooms, where they, where they fall, you know, in the continuum of affordability. And I think we graded them from like A to F. And about 40% of them were in that bottom half. So with that, then the, the targeted production, looking at that and looking at what we could expect out of, out of the process here, we came up with a range of 120 to 160 affordable units. And, and we, you know, used a couple of different models and looking at that, that 80% would be affordable in that, in this model for 120, only 50% of the hotels would participate in the program. So 15 hotels, you know, half of that, you know, so seven or eight hotels could get to that number. So we, you know, we're still working with, you know, where that all that's going to land. These are just projections. Then the enhancements is privately funded that helped us get into the under .5 acre category. And then like Nancy partnering with the Carmel Foundation for help with applicants. And then there's this idea of including in the hotels, what's called a hotel residency, residential suite option. And that basically, it's where an owner purchases and occupies a portion of the hotel, a portion of the year, and that's put back into the hotel inventory the rest of the year. And they're usually larger luxury, luxury units with more amenities and will increase the TOT transient occupancy tax. These are not timeshares or fractional ownership or club membership. And this could help possibly with the absentee second home ownership. Because one of the realtors we were talking to said that people that buy second homes only come for a short period of time would really be interested in something like this. So that's that. And the last piece is just trying to nail down the incentives and the processes. And a lot of the developers, you know, were very interested in make it easy for us, you know, obviously water's a priority, but it was swift permitting and reduced development fees. So the next page is questions that I have too. I'm not going to go through them. I think they're on the attachment that you have, but I would really appreciate your feedback and any questions you might have. Thank you. And now next is Hans on downtown.
Thanks, Tim. How's everybody doing? I'm going to present on the, the downtown. And the downtown section is actually sort of two programs in one. So this is sort of a complicated piece of the process. And I, I want to talk about both of those programs. But I want to start by just talking about the process that we used to get there, which I think kind of speaks to kind of the intensity of the effort. So we went out and did something that I don't think any community in California has ever done in this process over its 50 years of existence. You know, we went out and created a database of every property in Carmel. And then we also essentially created our own iPhone app. And we then took a bunch of volunteers, some of whom are sitting in the audience tonight. I know Mel spent many hours doing this. And we had resident volunteers, everyone from seniors to high school kids. And we, you know, trained them up, gave them this app. And we went out and comprehensively mapped every commercial parcel in Carmel by the sea and every single leasable space in those parcels. I'm talking over 1,000. And it was like just a phenomenal amount of effort. So just hundreds of volunteer hours. You know, we were out there on freezing days, right? So, you know, I think over the course of that, we gleaned some great information, which is going to really help us put together this sites inventory. We also had some discoveries, just kind of organically. And both of those discoveries led to the two programs that I'm going to talk about now. One thing we found was we were out there and we found a lot of kind of off the beaten path commercial space that was underutilized, maybe vacant. And that's where we came up with this idea for a live-work use. We also, we also came up with the concept for mixed-income housing downtown and in particular focusing on 8,000 square foot lots as an opportunity to get, to push HCD to lower their minimum site size. So that is the, the process context. And the first program I want to talk about is this live-work program. So it's a proposal to create a new live-work use downtown. And it would be a hybrid use category, which would have sort of a commercial storefront, could be small, could be as small as even like 100 square feet, just a place to kind of display your wares, et cetera, with a partition and then residential space behind. And, you know, you would only be allowed to convert your commercial space into a live-work space if it was a deed-restricted affordable unit. And so the process of discovery here was folks were out beating the pavement. And as you know, we've got inner block walkways in Carmel, we've got alleys and you sort of go down these and you go around the corner and up some stairs and there's a commercial space. And frequently they would be vacant, they would be used for storage, they would have "by appointment only" signs or my favorite, "by appointment or by chance." And, and so, you know, we, we talked to brokers and we found that there was really this kind of tale of two downtowns in Carmel. There is that sort of like high-street retail that has commands, really high rents, has high occupancy, very healthy. And then you have this kind of impaired commercial space that's off the beaten path, low rent levels and significant vacancy and, and underutilization. And so in talking to the leasing brokers, originally it sounded crazy. And it's going to sound crazy to you, but what we found was that you could actually as a property owner, rent a space as a deed-restricted affordable live-work space for more rent on a per-square-foot basis than if you did it as a pure-play commercial space. It really does sound crazy, but we worked the math six ways to Sunday and it's true. And, you know, so the, the concept is basically to, to kind of create like a Venice, to reactivate some of these sort of off-the-beaten-path spaces that currently are vacant. You have four rent signs, it uses storage, right? Underutilized and to reactivate that space. And so, you know, in terms of incentivizing this, one of the key incentives that we want to offer is water, and I'm looking at Stephanie here. But, you know, we, we think that's obviously key here. And so in general, we view this as a real win-win. It's a win for the property owner because they can command a higher rent, which enhances the value of their property. You know, given the cap rates in Carmel, which is sort of a way that you value income from a property, every incremental dollar that you, that you gain in net operating income and revenue enhances the value of your property by like 30 times. So it really does make sense for the property owner. It's beneficial for the tenant, it's a win for them because they potentially have two rents. Maybe they have a commercial space somewhere and they have a residential space they're renting. They came to combine those into one single rent that's now at a, at an affordable level. And it's a win for the community. You know, as, as you all know, right, this began as a, an artist colony, right? So this concept of being able to bring back some of those artisans, right? And maybe you've got a ceramicist or maybe you've got somebody that makes jewelry or a painter and they have a place to display their wares, also live here in town. You know, we could define, you know, as we implement this, what, what exact types of uses would be acceptable? You could also imagine residents serving services. And maybe it's a single-chair salon, maybe it's a place where you could tutor kids, you know, that we could define all of that. And so, yeah, we had a really positive meeting with the state on this. They really liked it. And, you know, in terms of production, it would be mostly studios and one bedrooms because these are smaller spaces. And it would be sort of a gamut, moderate income, low income, potentially even very low income works financially. The next program in the downtown is a program to incentivize the creation of mixed-income housing. And when we talk about mixed-income housing, you know, we built some initial financial pro formas and, you know, something in the neighborhood of 75% market rate, 25% affordable, you know, might be 70, 30, but somewhere in that neighborhood is kind of what you need to make the math work. The basic idea is just if you said, hey, you can only build deed-restricted affordable units, nobody's going to do it, right? It just, the math doesn't pencil. And so what we want to do is try to find a way to make it so that it'll clear the hurdle rate for that property owner to make, to make them invest in it. And so that is where that comes from. In terms of, you know, incentivizing it, what we're talking about is the proposal is for higher density in terms of the dwelling units per acre. You know, we've got planning commissioners here. As you all know, there's multiple things that constrain what can get built, right? You've got building height, you've got FAR, floor area ratio, right? And it's, it's, it's all of those things. And what we're talking about is to go from, you know, currently you can go up to 88 dwelling units an acre on a 100% affordable project. And, but on a mixed-income project only to 33. And so what we're saying is, well, just make the mixed-income project have the same maximum dwelling units per acre. We're not talking about changing some of these other things at the moment. And so, you know, it's, it's like you have this box and you're talking about, well, how many residential units are you allowed to put in the box, if that makes sense? So, you know, there, the other piece of it is water. We identified water as an issue with an impediment. And so the idea here would be to offer water, not only for the deed-restricted affordable units, but also for the market rate units that are needed in order to make the deal pencil. Because otherwise, again, it's not going to get built. And so there's multiple applications here. You could have a conversion, like imagine like a second-story space that's just already existing, like the building is already there and you just convert it, to convert the upper story to residential, that would, that would apply here. Another would be like an addition. You know, we have several places where like half of the lot is a parking lot or, you know, maybe it's, you know, there's different, different ways that you could do sort of adaptive reuse or, or an addition. And then there's also like just the redevelopment scenario, right? And so we're trying to incentivize small Carmel-scale buildings and higher bedroom counts so we get some, we get some families. And one of the inspirations, you know, we just had a call, was it our fifth call with the state? Our fifth call with the state this morning? And we presented on, we were pitching them on the concept of, they normally have this requirement where you can only get credit for a lower-income unit if it's a, at least a half-acre site, so 21,780 square feet. And we were pitching them on, hey, look, just given the distribution of lot sizes here, 8,000 square feet, Carmel double lot. What we found through our process is we have these in town and we have 36 of them, in fact. And so what we're trying to do is get credit for those. And, you know, remarkably, the state is open to it, even like slightly favorable to it, which honestly is a, is a huge, I can't overstate how big that is. And so one of the things that had inspired us is the last real affordable development built in Carmel is TruVet Court, built by the Carmel Foundation back in 2010, 8,000 square foot lot, 14 units. And when you look at it, you're like, hey, like that, that feels like a very Carmel building. It's got a courtyard, you know, I could go without the little tower thing that it's got, but you know, aside from that, like it looks pretty good. And, you know, the, in terms of commercial space, it doesn't have any, but in our program, we would be looking at retaining that kind of mixed-use character. So you have street-front commercial and then, you know, something, this would be sort of a, what a redevelopment scenario could look like, right? But mixed income as opposed to 100% affordable, which is, you know, what this is privately financed. This was also privately financed just by the generosity of donors. But, so that is what's going on with the downtown. We've made a lot of progress. I'm not going to get too into this. I already talked about meeting with HCB. You know, what's next is basically to, to take all this data and create that sites
All right, we're at the last fourth of the four quarters. And those of you who were here before know that we have always thought of churches as a good potential area. The housing element that was submitted did have churches involved, but just one church site. And we didn't get much credit for it. It was, it was sort of discussed under an old law that only allowed single-family development on these church sites. So everything's changing all the time. The state wants to be very supportive of this partnership between religious organizations and housing. So we thought we can dig in more to that. As you remember, for those of you who were here for the community meeting last year, we already knew that the state loves religious partnerships with housing. We knew that we only had the one site, when in fact Carmel by the sea has a sort of shocking amount of church land within its borders. We have five churches and 15, over 15 acres, which is 2.5% of all of our land. That's pretty amazing. And at least from what we understood of the last community meeting, there was support for this, just like there's state support, just like there's nationally, a lot of support for churches getting involved in their communities in this way. As attendance is declining, this is a way that churches find purpose in their communities. So as a result of that positive feeling about it, Christie and I, Christie's the partner on the church sub-program and strategy, she and I put together this Faith and Home Summit, which was just meant to introduce and sort of support all of our churches here in terms of what is available to them. We had three wonderful experts that joined us pro bono. Dr. Nixon is a very active minister who has ushered some housing projects along. Laura Davis is a lawyer who knew the details on the legalities of this. And we had a fellow named Sibley Simon. All these folks volunteered to help our community. And he talked about the sort of nitty-gritty of funding and development approaches. It was a very well-attended, it was upstairs here in this building. We had architects, we had builders, we had the city staff, we had a lot of volunteers and we had those professional speakers. All of our churches attended. They sent multiple representatives. And we learned from that, that all of them felt that housing was either their highest priority or close to it. And again, this is just following a national trend. So shortly thereafter, we compiled a toolkit that went out to these same five churches that had just follow-up on, you know, videos they can watch, books they can read. Our, our speakers offered their time, again, pro bono to be advisors and also recommended other folks that would be resources for the churches. So that got people excited. Then, one of the things, one of the feedback things... Then, um, one of the things, one of the feedback things we got from the summit was that there is an initial step that really helps churches get going, which is basically a feasibility analysis of their properties. Cause I mean, think about it this way. This is true of most of us who are not in the business. We're probably only going to do a design project once in our lives. Not you, Michael, but most people. And certainly churches. I mean, this is going to be the one thing they do. And so you're really kind of at sea a little bit. And what we learned from the experts was that even before they put pencil to paper to sketch out ideas, they really need to have their architects be aware of what is possible on their particular site. So Marnie was very kind enough to do something that normally the churches have to pay for. And that is to put together a sort of legal analysis. And this is the very small version there. This is, this is example of one of the five that she put together. So it's basically the front and back of, of a sheet of paper. The front is a general list of what the state does for all churches with all the codes and links of how to research that further if you're working with a church. And then the flip side of that page, the last thing on the right there was five separate analyses of the five separate pieces of land that she put together. This is a very generous thing that the city did for the churches. And I think it's pretty unusual. So I think the churches are feeling very supported at this time. Since then, Marnie and I have met with some of the churches individually. And we're going to meet with all of them eventually to see, they're very appreciative of that work. And just to basically get them to the next step. Later in January, we did also, just like everyone else, we had a program review with the, with the state. They recognized the level of effort that the city was putting into this in outreach. I think it again, is very unusual. And so we had a very positive response from the, from HCD. We think that this might account for about, just realistically about 60 units. We actually, when we spoke to HCD, discussed a higher count, which was not controversial to them. We're talking about what we can get them to agree is something they will count for us. But this is probably what we're thinking is, is feasible at this point. So just going forward, as mentioned, we've been meeting individually with the churches. We have learned that obviously financial stuff is very important. We had heard the feedback and are considering putting together a second summit that's more focused on financials and what the financial resources are. I don't know if we're going to get that together shortly or not, but also exploring a charitable trust. I don't know if folks know this about the housing element, but the city is committed to putting together a housing trust that is publicly funded. That is something that we have submitted and had approved in 2024. This is a slightly separate idea, which is like a parallel charitable version of that. So that folks who are private donors, who want a tax write off or who just want to have a means to support this effort can also do that. I'm actually, we met with the, you all don't even know this yet. I met, I just learned I'm going to meet with the Carmel, the community foundation tomorrow. And I've met with the Carmel foundation already about who's going to host that. We have a little short list of architects who've expressed an interest in helping churches, especially just to sort of get going and get the sketches. And so they can start to envision what's possible on their property. One of the things that Marnie and I've talked about in their individual meetings was all the programs that's on sheet two there, or the, the front of the sheet, that the state has all these recommendations. There's many things that qualify as housing on, on religious land. But, you know, like, um, kind of joint, joint facilities where you might have supportive housing where, you know, you have a bedroom, but then the, the kitchen, the cooking and living spaces are shared and things. So there's all sorts of products in a way for them to consider. And they're, I think they're excited about the flexibility of that. The other thing that's going to be helpful about having the architects involved is that we do owe the HCD a little bit more detailed information in order to get these units counted toward our RENA numbers. And that's just sort of looking at these individual sites and getting more particular about what each of them can accommodate. So you'll see the questions appear on your yellow sheets. And we'll get back to that in the end, which is basically now. So I think that covers all the programs and all the strategies. I imagine there's a lot of questions. You don't have to answer or even address the questions that we've already raised. You can ask us anything. We are, you know, here to learn from you. Just because we've done all this work does not make us experts. It just means that we are learning as well. And we really, really value the opportunity to get your feedback. So I'm going to get a mic here for the audience. Did I skip a something? Sorry. Oh, that's right. Cause Brandon, Brandon is sick. And that's why we're a little thrown off because this was going to be Brandon slides. But I mean, this is a recap. We, um, we do believe that the collaboration with HCD has been surprisingly successful. We are really heartened by that. We feel like they're going to, they really want to find a solution that works for us. That's the feeling that I have, and I think the group agrees. We already mentioned that we think that's going to result in a custom solution for us. And it's going to be, I personally believe it's going to be an example for the state, possibly the nation, on how to work together to do something that is really tailored for a place that it's not a, it's not a black or white. It's not, you have to do it this way or you can't do it at all. So we, again, to restate, we've, we do think that all of these things, these, the better housing solution, plus a number of things you heard along the way about other problems we've been aware of that can be addressed by a good housing solution. And the next steps, as the planning commissioner will find soon, is that we, and we said this to HCD this morning, the next thing they hear from us is going to be some draft language, very drafty. We're working with a consultant. I don't know if that's been mentioned very much, but we, um, the neighbors that started this group, Hans in particular, did a lot of research to, to vet various consultants who would be in the right mindset. A, to work with us to do something kind of unusual, which is to revisit this whole thing. And B, who have an enormous amount of expertise to really have, I don't know, pull with HCD. So we've been very pleased so far with Veronica Tam, who we've employed, the city is now employing, who's just been strategically sitting in. I don't think we've spent a ton of her time yet, but sure, her phase is now coming. She will be now drafting some language for us and making more of the arguments to HCD that technically support some of these ideas. And then of course, we'll have the standard public hearings and the adoption process, which starts, public hearings will start with planning commissioners, of course. So anyway, I saw a hand already. So let me pass the mic. Thank you, Tim. And I think we have folks on Zoom too. So if at any point those Zoom people want to make themselves known.
Before we dive into the questions, I just wanted to thank you all. It's very impressive. My neighbor Charlie and I came tonight and we were here before. And I must admit, along with everyone else in this room at that time, we were all utterly dismayed. And now I'm feeling like I can just leave and go home happy.
Don't do that, but thank you.
Very much.
So the neighbor.
Yes, for the conversion, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Of the hotel. Now there's no kitchens or anything. I mean, it's just a room that you rent. So I don't see how that really works. And also for a family, you know, like a couple could be in there, but you still don't have a kitchen or.
No, here, let's give you, let's, Kim, here, take another mic. We're going to get, no? Okay.
So, yeah, I wasn't able to show a lot of detail on that, that program. But we went through a pretty extensive process of looking at a hotel and how many rooms could, could a hotel convert into affordable, into housing? And we actually used some square footage from Mark Watson's hotels and said, hey, if we use these hotels, you know, what kind of conversion rate would we get? To your point, you know, kitchens, they might have to be a little bit larger, you know, stuff like that. And he came up with a, a ratio of about 80 to 85%. So that's factors. So if we had a hotel with a, you know, 100, with 10 rooms, we're only going to get, um, uh, yeah, like eight, you know, out of that to, uh, to answer, you know, what your question is. Does that make sense? Yeah, great, thanks.
And then I might add from my lessons on Tim and Mark's expertise is that some of these hotels used to be apartment buildings.
That's a good point.
And so that's been nice to find that, find that discovery, which means that the conversion can be more like one to one. All right, somebody else. Mel.
Thank you. Am I on?
I think you're on.
Great. And I'll say these questions of mine are, I am a planning commissioner and I'm speaking as a, as a planning commissioner. My first question has to, well, first, in celebrating all of the work of this group. And for those of you that haven't participated, I don't know how obvious it is that hundreds of dedicated professional hours they have, they have donated and the commitment. So kudos to all of you, truly. And due to all of that great work, my, relates to my first question. You've been so good at identifying these new sites. And I'm wondering if there's a plan to review and potentially revise the floor area and bonus and the bonus density that you plan to give developers. So that's my first question.
Is that a good answer for Marnie? It's a Marnie question. You ready, Marnie?
It can be a to be continued.
It's okay.
I mean, it's definitely something that we're looking at because it ties into the incentives.
Exactly.
Um, as part of the density. So it is something we'll be looking at.
Great, thank you. So my second question has to do with the recent CAL FIRE maps that many of us have seen. The Pine Cone had them last week or the week before, and they're sobering. They definitely highlight Carmel's current density as both a high risk, right? For us succumbing to wildfire and a barrier to safe evacuation. And our community wildfire protection plan does say that the most common form of safe evacuation is a personal vehicle. So my question is, and again, it could be a to be continued, but how does the state's RENA program accommodate our city's need for public safety and planning for natural disasters that we know accompany climate change?
Well, something that I have been trying to publicize in the past month or so, I was going through this, the city's audit report. And I was on page like 100 and, I don't know, 50, something. And there was a chart and it was, it was like an absolute, like, just like jaw dropper. You know, and it showed the population of Carmel over the past 10 years. And it went from 3,900 and change to closer to 3,000 in nine years. And over that same time, the median age went from 54 to 65. So, you know, if we're, we're going from 3,900 to 3,000 ish residents. You know, I think one of the things that we need to kind of like wrap our mind around is, you know, there's actually, even if we add, you know, add people through these programs, there's still going to be a lot less people here, even three or four years with these programs than there were, you know, in 2015. So I think it's a, I think it's a good point. But I also think like the, the context also, you know, is helpful.
And Hans, I think you're, that's probably, oh, sure, of course.
So as a point of reference, and this is not me speaking, this is HCD. I sat in a couple of hour ADU seminar that they held. And this was after the disasters that were down in LA. And they say they do not care. Almost verbatim, they do not care. That's not our problem. You're still on the hook for delivering a plan that will allow this to work. Now I do believe there is some exceptions to that, that they really don't want to encourage incremental housing in the extreme, in the highest category of fire district. But any of those that are beyond or below the highest fire zone district, that's greenfield to them. So those are just two points, not me speaking, but the state.
Well, thanks Nancy. Well, and that means then it's on us. So we'll take care of ourselves. And Hans, I think you, you pretty much answered my next question. The general plan requires sufficient utilities, right? For all of our residents, the power of the water, the sanitation. And so my question was with the addition of the units, does either this version of the housing element or the, the planned amendment, are there any considerations for the increase in utility needs? But based on what you're talking about with population changing, maybe that isn't really a question?
You know, um, I, I think like anytime you're adding like new structures, there's, there are impacts, you know? And, um, uh, so I'm not going to say that there aren't, but certainly in terms of the actual number of humans here, there will probably be less humans here, even after this, than there were, you know, 10 years ago.
But, but we still are going to need like power hookups, cable hookups, right? All of that. And, and is that?
It's kind of an unfunded mandate, right?
Well, it is. And is that independent of the city? Is that something that the utilities respond to?
So what I, I can say is that, you know, as part of the original housing element, we did an environmental document and utilities is part of that document. So we can refer to that as a resource to see how the consultant analyzed utilities for these 349 units. Typically what happens is the cities reach out to the different utility providers and share our plans with them and talk about, you know, capacity as part of that environmental analysis.
And at what point would, with the sixth cycle housing element, at what point would the city then engage those conversations with the utilities?
So that would have happened when we were developing the environmental document prior to the adoption in April of 24.
Oh, perfect. Well, I'll be reaching back out to you for a copy of that. And, and my last question, I, I promise. So about 40 years ago, Carmel did a survey. And it was in the mid eighties and all kinds of questions. And one really big concern that floated to the top had to do with lack of parking, especially downtown. And I understand that still is a concern today. We know that limited, limited parking and congestion, we know that has an environmental impact. We know it has a safety impact. We also know that there are incentives to reduce parking in exchange for building low income housing for developers. So my last question is kind of a two part. It, is there any option to shift that incentive for reduced parking requirements? And is there a plan to do a parking study that I think might have been requested at a, at a previous meeting? And that's my last question.
It's up for you, Marnie. The parking? No?
Yeah.
Poor Marnie.
I'm not sure about the parking study. What I would say about parking is it's one of those things, like if you build it, they will come. And if you build more, more will come. Like it, it's just kind of one of those things, like in a, in a community like ours, where there's tourism, I don't know that we could ever provide enough parking. I think the more parking you provide, the more dependent on vehicles people become. And we might want to start looking at ways to reduce the dependency on vehicles. I don't know exactly what that might look like, but it could help relieve some of the pressure.
Well, Marnie, you're making me think of when Marnie and I were at our last church meeting. The church we were talking with was talking about the Zipcar model. Because they thought, let's say we have a senior facility, for example, and there are 20 seniors in this facility. They're not going to need 20 cars. Maybe they'll need one or two cars. And so, and they'll have a parking spot for those two cars. And that'll be a kind of shit car share approach. And I was very struck by that as like quite. And I was very struck by that as like quite innovative and cool. And I just think that's the sort of thinking we want. And plus, luckily, our town founders designed a compact village. And a number of the things we've heard, and Pepe's not here today, but he, he was really an inspiration for a lot of our thinking about the downtown because he argues that one of the reasons he can't keep his restaurants open as late and as long as he would like is that he has people commuting in their own individual cars for three hours a day, and they simply can't manage. That's why he would like to build units. Those people then would not need a car. Now, that doesn't mean they won't have one, but they probably won't be using it every day. They'll be commuting downstairs to Little Napoli and then going back upstairs. And that is, he thinks that solves two problems at the same time, the congestion, the traffic, the, the, the car ownership. But also, he can keep his restaurant open. He has a close by workforce. So that's part of what Marnie's, I think, indicating.
Couple more on the parking thing that, that in the state laws, again, they are very tight about having parking be aligned to incremental housing. So they really want to discourage parking availability for the incremental housing that we roll out. I mean, that's really evident in all of the ADU legislation. And our, what, what we end up doing with our own ordinance here locally has, it can be different than what state law dictates, but it generally has got to be different, but with still honoring the, the baseline that the state requires of us. So, so we can, you know, do some things, and, and that's still in the works by the city team. But, and yeah, parking is, is a bear and will continue to be.
Thank you. Melanie, you did, you did great use of your mic time. And then after.
I am sorry, my name is Maya, and I'm just a resident. I am not involved with anything.
You're the finance committee.
But I have three questions, but I'll be, maybe I'll ask my three questions and you can answer them instead of going one by one, but I can. One is, a simple question is more for the planning group, I guess possibly Marnie. We have a housing element that has been approved, and it has three hundred and forty-nine houses that we are supposed, we were committed to build in the next eight years. And two years have passed, right? So my first question is, what have we done so far to implement what we told Sacramento that we were going to do? That's my number one. I know we're talking only specifically here about the one hundred and forty-nine affordable, low-income, mid-income housing solution. And I, I applaud all of your efforts because you've done an amazing job. You've done incredible research, and I'm quite excited about what I saw today. So very happy from prior meeting. So first question is what we're doing today in implementing. Second question is, and Nancy, this is, you're going to hate me for this because I know I brought this up before. I am concerned about almost like putting the, the cream on top of something by saying ADUs are a solution. And here's my reason why. ADUs don't seem to be a solution to me unless they are going to be rented. And they are really, there are really housing available to the human beings that need the housing. That's the actors, the workers, the people who work in our community. So my question is, as of those that have already been built, how many are they rented so far? That's my second question, okay? And the third question, which was kind of a more generic one, I think it's great what we're doing for the, what you have discovered inside the town, the village, we call it the village, so I am not used to it. But that you've discovered some kind of open space that you can make live and workspace. I suggest we look at some of like, I'm very familiar with the pods, the small living spaces, you probably know about them. They do them a lot in the, in the big cities. I've seen them in Seattle. I have a brother-in-law who built thirty-five of them, and they're really tiny places, and they're very, very doable. So maybe I'll share some ideas. I'll share with our architect here, just so that he can sort of look into those because I think those can be done. Those, I, I think that's a great alternative. So any answer to my two questions, that'll be great.
Do you want me to start? I'll, I'll start with what have we done to implement? So we just completed our 2024 annual progress report. We presented it to the planning commission, and it's going to be on the next council agenda for March 31st. So you can take a look at that. It's got a lot, a lot more detail. Just kind of in a nutshell, we had one workshop where we talked about the zoning code amendments that we committed to implementing with the due date of December 2024. So we are a little behind schedule, but we did have a workshop to kind of go through those amendments. We also, we have put out a request for proposals for the objective design and development standards. The deadline actually closed yesterday, and we do have three proposals that we're reviewing. So that is moving forward. We've been doing some work on the website to just try to get more information and resources up there as well. So those are kind of the major implementation efforts so far.
I would add to, to Marnie's comments in that across, I mean, I would spend a lot of time looking at all sorts of other jurisdictions, zeroing in on, on ADUs because that's kind of the hat that I wear. But there are, the Southern California sans the, the fire issues have, they started their cycle two years before our start of cycle. Our start of cycle is 2023 to 2031, excuse me. So the, the big thing is that they care a whole lot about you demonstrating progress, not only with permits that are issued, which we've had permits issued. We've had actually twenty-four ADU, or twenty at least, ADU permits issued in last year. So those things help show materiality and progress to the state that they care about. And as long as you're demonstrating progress, they will kind of give you some slack. And then, of course, all this work that we're doing is credited towards us moving the ball forward to delivering housing. So all of those things add to the mix of, of proving to the state that, that we're in it to at least demonstrate plans and incentives, et cetera, that will move us forward. So, so those make a difference. I would add then back to your specific questions on the ADUs beyond the twenty-four that are permitted, or twenty-ish, somewhere in there. Because it's a moving target, because you don't want to double count things. And so it gets messy with the numbers. But setting that aside, with the ADUs, people have the right to do with their property as they want to do with their property. So we cannot force them to rent their units, their available units on their property. So, so that is not in the mix. We are not in that program at all. We just want to provide services and incentives that would move them down that path. So that's, you know, if it's, you know, water credits, removing, you know, removing or discounting permit fees, you know, those types of things that, that do the deed restriction, which is going to enforce that rental, rental aspect. You know, those things contribute towards getting actual people living in these spaces versus just being built out and leaving them dormant for maybe a visitor that's going to come in twice a year or something for a major event. So clearly, our, our goal and our desire is to get full-time residents here. We need people to participate in meetings. We need people at boards and commissions. We need people to enjoy the activities and et cetera, do the volunteer work in our village. So we need people to live here. So clearly, that's an underpinning in all of our desires and motivations and should show up in what we end up doing with, with incentives. Requiring, you know, deed affordability inside, inside the hotel program is just another example of, yes, those need to be affordable and getting folks that are qualified for the affordable profile will help that. I mean, these are not going to appear overnight either. It's going to take a while, any of these building projects, for various reasons. But removing some of the barriers inside what the city does to expedite approvals and, and take the edge off of fees, et cetera, are all a part of some of that. Did I answer most of what you said? Okay, all right.
And I'll just add to the microunit thing that we have already discussed and studied just what's permissible health and safety-wise in the state of California. And it's shocking to most people to hear, how small? A hundred and fifty-ish square feet is a permissible unit size. And the architects that are working with us are aware of that?
Yes.
And they are use, using that to help understand the feasible mixes that we can put on a site. There's a gal behind over here first. I'm trying to keep an eye on the order of things. And then maybe like this. Oh, sorry, no, it was, was it you? I think it was you. Two blue shirts, sorry.
Two blue shirts. First of all, I wanted to say why I got here. Because Thursday morning, I was driving off the peninsula at six-thirty in the morning, and I was just struck again by the onflow of cars. I mean, it's like Boston rush hour traffic coming in at seven in the morning. And, you know, you see it again leaving. So this is, this is important. I really appreciate all the work you've done. I have a basic question. Is there some number of rentals versus purchases that is required? Can we focus more on just rental units? Or are we required to have the, a certain number of affordable units?
We're mostly doing rentals all the time. We, we don't even, we haven't even discussed like products that would be for sale, which you could criticize us the opposite way. But we're basically entirely on a rental mindset.
Thank you very much. This is quite exciting to get affordable housing here. My name's Patricia Harrington from Monteverde Street, and I just quite, don't quite understand the hotel keys. When you were talking about if you transform hotel units into housing, it, the, the double sale and that the seller or the buyer gets a hotel key that they can then use to go develop another hotel unit in another location? And my question had to do with, well, where are they going to develop another hotel? If we don't even have property to develop the housing, where are they supposed to be developing these hotels? And what unintended consequences would that create? Creating additional high-end hotels and not having a mix of hotels? So I just would like some more information on that.
Wow, okay. I have that in here somewhere. I've got a slide. Hang on a second, I have a slide that has some data on it. Okay, kind of help explain it. So, and I actually have a, a matrix that shows kind of how the flow of, you know, who builds what, who buys what, who sells what, that I could send you. And I think that would really help clarify it too. But this, this pro forma that Mark put together, Mark Watson put together, it was for a fifteen-room hotel. And the purchase of that hotel, you know, going through all the things like Hans was talking about earlier, you know, cap rates and things like that. The purchase of that hotel based on, you know, specific revenue expense, et cetera, was four, four point four million dollars. And the conversion, and this might go to your question, the conversion cost to convert the rooms, to upgrade them, put, you know, kitchen, kitchenettes, whatever, was a hundred thousand dollars per room. So now the cost to the developer for the investment for that, purchasing that hotel, that small fifteen-unit hotel, is five and a half million dollars. So he's, so he's, he's in, they've been converted to affordable housing, and he can turn around. And now that affordable, that affordable housing investment that was five and a half million dollars, that, that affordable housing conversion building is worth probably, we had three point nine million. So it doesn't pencil out that far. However, the, the hotel keys, so you get that when you buy, when you buy a hotel, you get access to the hotel rights. And Carmel has a cap of nine hundred and forty-eight hotels. So they become hotel rooms. Well, yeah, hotel rooms. So the hotel keys, which are really hotel rooms, are, you know, really valuable. So in this situation, the sale of the hotel keys, they figured it out at around three hundred thousand dollars per room. So fifteen rooms, that's four point five million. So if he, if this individual sold the hotel keys for four point five million, sold the affordable housing for three point nine million, his, his return is eight point four million on the investment of five point five. Okay, so that's, that's really up to the developer, okay? So you as a developer, if I have the hotel keys, and you're like, oh, yeah, I want, I want those. I want to get a, a new hotel here in Carmel. You're going to have to figure that out. And, you know, some of it, there, there's been discussion that there are existing hotels that would really be interested in adding, you know, a couple more rooms, maybe one of these residential, hotel residential suites, you know, to their hotels. And they might buy the keys to, you know, take, to upgrade their hotel and, you know, things like that. But it's, that's going to be a real challenge. Some of the developers have said, you know, we'll just buy another hotel and we'll, you know, build a new hotel there. So, but, but to, but to get the keys and to participate in this, this program, you have to commit to the affordable housing component of it. So, yeah, so that, that's, that's going to be a challenge, yeah.
But I mean, it's worthwhile keeping in mind that no hotelier who purchases these scarce keys that are valuable can do anything that is against village character. So housing has some flexibility with it. We have certain state laws that require us to be flexible about our requirements on them. But that is not true of hotel builders. Hotel builders must do what we require them to do locally. So they are not going to be building some enormous skyscraper Hilton with this thing. They're going to figure out how to integrate onto their parking lot or in the back or somewhere else these extra keys that they purchase.
I, I, if I could just ask one more question, I think this woman brought it up. Are these going to be rentals? Are these going to be rentals or ownership? And the answer was this is a hundred percent rentals that we're talking about. And I'm wondering if there is any discussion or thought about actually creating ownership opportunities for people for the long term, a long-term program to create ownership opportunities?
I think, I think that's, that's a good question. I mean, it, we just haven't crossed that bridge. I mean, in the hotel component, that resident, the hotel residential suite, that would be something, I mean, that's going to be market rate, you know, a couple million dollars type of thing. So it's not going to be, I think where you're going is purchasing an affordable unit, yeah. I don't know.
Can the hotel keys be sold outside of Carmel to another hotel or? No.
Yeah. There's something else I was going to bring up, just kind of, we thought was interesting. We talked to one, one developer and their, their whole idea is they want to come into high destination areas like ours. They've got some, some units in Martha's Vineyard and other, other places. But their, their theme is they come in, they buy a hotel, they convert it to affordable housing for their staff. And then they get their staff here, and then they go out and they buy another hotel, and they upgrade it. So, you know, there's all kinds of different models out there.
This is fantastic. I, I love how creative it is and how unique and that it would be customized to our town and potentially be a model for the future. One thing that I notice in the planning commission is that every month when we have a meeting, we have residents that express concerns about the cottages here being torn down. Is there anything that your group can come up with where we would maintain the cottages, but, but potentially add more living residences on those properties so that we can kill... so that we can kill two birds with one stone? Um, because I, I think that as we see homeowners coming in and purchasing these, um, maybe older, um, uh, you know, cottages that are run down and, um, aren't necessarily places for a large family or something like that. We're seeing that they're, they're either wanting to just demolish them or they're wanting to remodel and, and change the, um, the cottage character. And so I was just wondering if there's anything that we could do to implement like a cottage plan to save the cottages and, and maybe incentivize owners, um, of those properties to, um, to be able to add some sort of additional housing on those properties.
Okay, so I was thinking originally.
Your mic not on Nancy.
Um, I was thinking originally that this was an ADU thing and it still might be in, in how we can help, uh, save those cottages. And if they can, you know, add an ADU, but the, the adding ADU gives them more living space, which basically anybody who doesn't, uh, hasn't totally maxed out their, uh, square foot, uh, footprint for, for housing. You know, do, do they build a, a, a second story on, on top of that with a setback that, uh, gives them additional space that, that could be an ADU? Cause you can do, you can do upstairs that becomes exterior accessible and that's an ADU. So, and or is it, you know, replacing the, the garage with an ADU? But I, I, this, I need to think through that a little bit more. I don't think we're really hitting on what you're trying to solve for yet with that. But, um, but there might be some answers in exploring that a little bit more. Mike?
Can I quickly say something on that too? Um, because I don't know if you and I, you and I might have talked about this, Erin, that, you know, I have a number of cottages in my neighborhood that are about to potentially be scraped and it's very upsetting to me. Um, I think, and Nancy will correct me if I'm wrong, since she's the ADU expert, that each property is permitted to have both a JADU and an ADU.
Yeah.
And therefore you could imagine taking a cottage which has one unit and have a cottage property and have three units on that property by course of law. I think, um, when properties get sold and when they, in the case that you and I have talked about, change hands through inheritance, there's a tax problem. And we have, um, which makes it harder for people to afford to do this thing that would preserve our village. And so that is something we need to explore, I think, more. It is not, I don't know. I feel like sometimes I read articles where it's like, oh, somebody has gotten the taxing authority to buy in. But I don't think we're there yet in this county. But maybe we can work on that. I mean, maybe we can lobby for it, et cetera. But I think, I'm glad you raised it, Erin, because it's, I mean, it would be again, one of those killing two birds with one stones if we could do it.
So I just wanted to, a comment on, um, preserving existing housing stock and re, and remodeling it. One of the things came up early on in the discussions about the, um, uh, the, uh, going over the design traditions, one point five. And this was, I was involved really early before the present, uh, discussions got involved with the workshop when, uh, Mark used to be the planning director. And, uh, one of the things that it was incentivizing people or causing them to tear the houses down is because of volumetrics. So, uh, the way, the way that, one of the things we did, uh, when we developed the design guidelines is we, in order to make the, to keep the character of Carmel, we have these smaller homes. We made a, uh, a design guidelines, they have a policy that the, the homes have to follow the grade. And if you have a lot of space under your house, that counts towards your volumet, volumetrics number. So sometimes when people buy a house and they want to expand it, they can't because they're, they're going to be over the volumetrics. So, uh, that's one of the things that's going on in design guidelines. The, uh, you know, the redo is that they're going to, you know, revisit that. And there's, I think there's been some suggestions how to, to take care of that so that people won't be sort of trapped into tearing their house down when they want to make it larger. The other thing which I think we just brought up, Victoria, which is really interesting is that, uh, I think, and this is kind of an educational thing, is that, you know, the R one zoning is really gone. It doesn't exist anymore in California because of the ADU law. Cause just what you said, you can build three units potentially on any lot in, in, in California now. So there is no such thing as just one residential unit on one lot. You know, you can build one junior ADU and you can build one detached or attached ADU. And then you have the main residence, so that's three units. So I think in an, if we educate people more to that fact, uh, we might get more, more applications which will have potentially, you know, three units on it. And those will be smaller because, you know, the lots in Carmel are small. You still have to abide by the setbacks, the height restrictions. So if you want to build more units, you're just going to have to build smaller, smaller units. But that, you know, one of the things I've seen, which your committee really did, and you said it at the beginning, is that the, um, you know, the restrictions are the, are really opportunities. And that's how you guys approached it. And you've come up with some really creative, you know, ways to, uh, to, to deal with that. And I think that live work is really a great idea. That really speaks to getting, um, business people downtown and, and, you know, maybe bringing back artisans back to this community, people that live and make something. They can sell it right there, live there. That's just a great idea. But overall, what, what, what this brings in, this affordability, small, because they're smaller units affordability is we're going to get a much more diverse, you know, uh, you know, active community. And that's what we need because as, as Hans said, we're really a dying community. I mean, it's a real tragedy, you know, we're, we've got the oldest demographic in the area. We've got this horrible affordability problem, which is encouraging second homes. And we've really got to figure out how to bring people in here or we're going to just become this hollowed out community. And, uh, so, so all of these things that you've come up with are, are really fantastic and, uh, you know, good work.
Thank you.
May I?
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
From everybody. Also some folks, I think Melanie, who else wants to talk? I've just after the, okay, there's at least two. And then I don't know if there's people online, but please Stephanie, go ahead.
Um, I'm Stephanie Locke and I'm one of the planning commissioners. Um, I'm going to give you my full gamut of comments on all of this and say thank you very much for the time and effort that's been putting in, put in on this because I'm actually extremely impressed with what's happened. But, you know, I work for the water management district as well. So I'll start with the water question. Um, the jurisdiction Carmel now has fourteen acre feet of water. Plus they had, I think, some small amount of water remaining from its previous allocation. That water can be used today for these projects. And, um, you can use us, what we're looking for are projects that won't be occupied and completed until the end of 2025, when the pure water Monterey expansion comes online. So hotel conversion projects, that kind of thing could move forward now because they're not going to be finished by the end of this year. So I just want to point that out. They are still subject to the meter moratorium that Cal Am has. And there may be some pushback for commercial conversions, um, when there's a change of use going from a commercial use to a residential use, um, as part of that. But, uh, anyway, so the water situation right now really shouldn't be an issue. That fourteen acre feet of water is enough water and it should be enough water to meet all of our housing needs going forward for about twenty years or more. So, um, it's a lot. And when we talk about these conversions of a hotel room or an ADU, um, they, they use such a small amount that, um, it's actually quite shocking what, what can be done. And most of these properties have ways that they, you know, they're putting in high efficiency appliances and things to reduce the water demand, um, so that, that water will go a long ways. And I just want to point that out.
Stephanie, before you move on, do you know anything about the meter moratorium?
Um, the water management district is, uh, moving forward with a plan to get the cease and desist order lifted. We've started, um, contacting the state water board, um, and businesses and some of these other people that have interests in getting the cease and desist order lifted. It is our goal that by the time this water project comes online at the end of the year, that we would be able to hopefully get the moratorium lifted at that same time. If not right then, it should be hopefully shortly after, um, because we are in compliance with the, um, with the pumping limits in the Carmel River, which is what the cease and desist order was all about. So, um, anyway, so, yeah, we are, we're doing that. Um, but what I want, let's see, I think going with a multi-cycle approach, that was a really good statement. Um, and I think the state actually would appreciate that. We are dealing with, you know, the, um, AMBAG, which is the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, who set these lovely limits for each of the jurisdictions without, you know, giving us the full consideration for the restrictions that we have. And, um, you know, I think there was a con, comment about transportation and being able to one, get out of this village if we had an emergency. But the second thing is there are a lot of projects right now that are planned in our area, which Carmel Valley and along highway one, as well as what we have to plan for within Carmel, that just, I mean, our, our transportation infrastructure cannot deal with traffic. And I think you guys have all mentioned the traffic that comes in and goes out during the day. But even what we have, we, we cannot put that many new people in our area, um, without changing our road system. So that, that has to be addressed as part of this. Um, let's see. On the ADU job, thank you. Um, I really think the renter match, and this goes to actually all of this. Working with the foundation is an absolutely critical thing. The goal to bring these people who are looking for affordable housing. I mean, I've heard horror stories. I've got a friend right now who is desperately looking for a place and she cannot find a place. And, um, so I think that, that is absolutely partnering is super important right now. Um, somebody mentioned pre-sale inspections for the ADUs. And I think that the city had a program back, maybe it was in the nineties or in the early two thousands, where they tried to legalize, um, existing ADUs. And so, so I think they did do that and it might've been in the early nineties. But going back and looking at, can we bring in those units that have been built? And just what I was going to say is the water district has a lot of information about second units. And, um, I know that city records do too, but that might be a place where we could partner on some of that. Um, the hotel program is a great idea. And I actually have heard, and Adam's been, um, one of these people that I know was involved uh, with, with somebody who was contemplating that concept back a couple of years ago. So I think it's a really good one. Um, affordability is, um, is really key. And adding those cooking facilities, um, really isn't going to change. So as far as water and that kind of thing, doesn't really make that much of a difference. In fact, the amount of water used in a hotel room is pretty much equal to what an apartment would be using. So there's, it's just a switch off on that. So I think that's, that's important. Um, the downtown, uh, mixed, you know, live work concept is an excellent concept, obviously. Keep in mind, San City has kind of been a leader on this. They've done a lot of work, um, yeah, the live work concepts over there. And, um, the one thing that I think I have seen more than anything about any of these units is getting people to actually deed restrict for affordable housing is incredibly difficult because nobody wants to be deed restricted to affordable housing. So we got to figure out a way to work through that challenge. Um, and then I think my last comment just has to do with the churches and trying to figure out who, which is the fifth church? Is the mission one of the churches?
Mission is in the boundaries.
It is in the city. Okay, thank you. That was, that's what I thought. So, um, and a question on that, and I know we've got parking lots. And, um, I actually lived across the street from All Saints for a long time. And I know there was discussion there about doing a housing project and perhaps just even pulling out of Carmel and moving, um, and creating housing there. But can they do, um, parking like below housing and somehow do multiple units over their parking areas?
For sure. I mean, the only, the only drawback to adding built parking is that it's expensive.
Correct.
So.
But if they've got existing parking.
Yes.
And maybe you could actually go, go about it. So that, that would be one idea. Anyway, thank you so much. You guys have done a great job.
Thank you. Marnie, can I borrow your microphone? I want to pass it to this side of the room because Melanie, you had your hand up. And I don't know, who else has their hand up? Oh, sorry. Okay, but maybe, oh, let him go first. Okay. You guys are both so polite.
Okay. Again, I, I love the fact that instead of going the lawsuit route with the state, you went the, let's collaborate, let's find a solution. I think that's brilliant. We could use more of that in this society for sure. It looks like you're, you're making some real progress. And just a point of fact, when I bought my house on Dolores in nineteen eighty-three, the population was five thousand residents. That's forty years ago. And I think Hans said, you said fifteen years ago, thirty-nine hundred.
Down, down to about three thousand.
We're down twenty-five percent from that and sinking all the time. Next thing you know, it's just a place for rich people to park money and maybe come and visit once in a while. But I, I like the thinking that however many house, units get built, even at, even if they're unrestricted on, on rent, if you add three hundred and fifty-fourty-nine additional rental units in this city, it will, and I, unless I'm crazy, I would imagine that will help depress rental rates for the better. Maybe you don't think that if you own a rental rate, but as a matter of fact, it would almost certainly do that because it's a substantial percentage of existing residential property that's accessible. So I think that it could have much more of an impact than we think. And I like the idea that some of these units don't have to be fifteen hundred square feet or a thousand square feet or whatever, that a couple of hundred square feet for somebody that's really desperate to live here and they want to work here, it's a win-win. So that's terrific. Um, I have a business partner who was involved with real estate and she, I took the call because she was refreshing my memory. Her organization got involved in a project in Los Angeles to convert an existing church, which they scraped the church. So now you have a nice sizable piece of property. And when you're done, they'll have a brand new church and between fifty and seventy rental units. And you can imagine what that does to the economics and the finances of that church. So they can't wait to do it. So that may be a bigger scale than what we would do in any of our five. But if we did ten percent of that on each one, it could really matter to the, to the church as well as to the supply of housing. So I took it as a very positive thing. But again, I think like the rest, I really appreciate all the thousands of person hours you put into this. And it looks like it's really making progress.
Thank you so much. Melanie has a mic.
I like everybody else. I just want to put on. Oh, um, thank you all for everything that you've done. You've come up with some really creative ideas. And I know that, um, the many people who live in this town who are not here tonight will definitely really appreciate all that you've done. I'm really excited to see really going forward with rental housing because I, it is desperately needed in this town. People who've lived here and worked here for eons cannot afford to live here anymore. And I know several examples of people who've been really good, um, loyal, uh, workers in this town who can't afford to live here. They've been kicked out of, I know three who've been kicked out of their living space. They cannot find living space. Only one has. And that was a great sacrifice, um, from people in the community who helped make her, uh, her rent for her because there was no way that she could, she could do it herself. And she's, um, a really elderly person with infirmities. We've got a lot of people in this community like that and we don't always see them. And, um, uh, so what you've come up with creatively, I think, is, is, is really outstanding and that, and also that you're emphasizing the, um, the rental aspect of it. Because I think rent as opposed to ownership is going to be like much of the rest. Because I think rent, as opposed to ownership, is going to be like much of the rest of the world, the way we're going to live. And, and, and that's just a fact. I'm glad, Michael, that you brought up, um, which I often do to people these days, of the fact that we no longer have an R one zone. Nobody in California really has an R one zone. They're living in an illusionary world. And that the state took away from us a long time ago. So, you know, we have to inform people of what the situation is and also help them solve the problem. And that's what you're endeavoring to do here, which is incredible. I think, um, working with the churches has been a really great idea. And, um, there's a lot of, of just vacant property sitting around, uh, that can be better utilized. And I love the, uh, the comment from the gentleman up here in front, um, about, uh, hi- his wife's experience with, with the church that she was, um, dealing with. Um, because it makes a lot of sense. The churches are different today than they were 20, 30 years ago. And so this offers them an opportunity to think creatively and they're all in need of money. Who isn't? And so that's, that's, you know, it's really something that I'm so glad to see you really look at seriously. I have a question. How does all of this hotel and downtown work, um, interface with the local coastal program? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm really wondering how this all is going to interface with, with what, what they have to say about, uh, our community. Because we're under very, um, we're under very special circumstances, as is most of central, um, most of coastal communities in this state. So I'm just curious as to what your interaction with them has been. And if you can share that with us. And then I've got one more thing I want to comment on, but I want to find an answer to the coastal, uh, act issue.
Yeah. So, um, we, we haven't approached them yet, but the, the, um, the timeline that we have to get this done by the end of the year definitely incorporates going to them. Obviously the, the approval, um, from the coastal commission, but I'll, I'll let Marnie speak to some of the specifics.
Yeah, so on the hotel side, I think that Brandon might've already.
That's true on that point.
Engaged with them. Yeah. That's a, you know, coastal commission is really concerned about obviously access. So, you know, as we convert hotels to affordable housing, we need to make sure that the other half of that happens where the hotels that we've displaced are replaced. So we've definitely got that, you know, in the mix. And, you know, that'll be a requirement that this program, you know, has got to pan out like that. So.
Yeah, because we have a certain, we're, we're demanded to have a certain number of hotel rooms. And, and people need to understand that. And that if you take away a unit, you must find a unit someplace else. So that's how I was curious as to how you're going to manage this. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's something that's key to the success of, of what you're trying to accomplish.
Exactly. And then there was another question pretty early on, um, that came from our group on, well, wait a minute, now that these underperforming hotels are going to be replaced by high-end hotels, higher, you know, uh, over average daily rates. You know, how, what's the problem, is there a problem with that? And so I, I looked into that with the coastal commission. I actually, um, got into one of their Zoom meetings down in Southern California. And they were talking about that's what, you know, that they would like to do that. They would like to protect the, um, you know, the rates. And the commissioner said, you, that's not in, within your jurisdiction. You can't, you know, qualify incomes and things like that for hotels. You just need to make sure that they're available and they're accessible. And, and, and they said, you know, what you can do is, you know, make sure that you sell the fact that they're, you know, they're not really here, but there are other options, you know, campgrounds, um, hostel, you know, hostels, things like that. So when it comes, I mean, that's how it stands now. When it comes to, you know, trying to control, um, hotel rates, that, that doesn't seem to be within their purview.
Well, that's kind, that's kind of something different, um, more recently then. Because they've had a very firm thing is accessibility to the coast does not just mean.
Right.
Traffic.
Right.
Uh, it means also that it, they're financially, um, open to all classes and incomes within the community. And so, um, I think we better watch that one closely.
Keep an eye on that because I was, I was kind of, really concerned about that as a group as well. Um, but the, the way that they were selling it back then was the coastal commission needs to provide access to everyone. And you can do it through these, you know, RV campgrounds, you know, things like that. So they, they want, they want to get involved in it, but there was some pushback from within the coastal commission ranks. So we'll keep an eye on it, Melanie.
And Tom, do you want to, um, just speak to something we've been considering that's a refinement for the plan, which has to do with the mandatory use of the key that you buy? So we haven't refined this yet, but the idea being that you don't just get to take this key and hold it forever and ever.
Yeah.
So we have things that we haven't quite worked out, I believe, but I'm not the hotel person.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more about, more about that myself.
A lot of that going on just with the, um, you know, the economics of what the, um, you know, redevelopment of existing, of existing hotels. I mean, Stillwell Hotel, you know, their, their average daily rates probably tripled from what they were before. So, so I mean, it's going on within the community now, just as a result of, um, you know, hotels, you know.
Well, we, we were having a very difficult time for many years up until more recently because our, our inns and motels were not up to what they should be for Carmel. And everyone complained about it. And so, you know, things are changing now. Um, but that is something that's extremely important. Um, I just wanted to make, uh, a comment and Mel brought it up and I brought it up. And Marnie will definitely, and Anna will remember, um, at the workshop for the planning commission, when they were talking about housing. And I find it really difficult to be talking about all of these things that we are doing or planning to do or wanting to do. And the devil in the room is parking. We're going no place, you guys, without a parking, a real parking plan that encompasses the entire community. It's not a little, you know, special project like paid parking. No, I'm talking about hiring a qualified, a really highly qualified parking consultant to look at every zoning area in this town, whether it's residential, commercial, yada, yada. The whole community and taking into consideration all of the projects and the ideas of staff. And what we have on the ground right now. Because we are never going to solve anything in this community if we don't get a handle. We can't, we can't say that we understand parking in this community. Not one single one of us in this room can say we understand it. It's a very complex issue. I'm glad to see some head shaking. Uh, and if we really want to go into the future with our eyes open, be realistic in what we're proposing. And the solutions that we think are going to solve the major issues that, that we are, you know, thinking about, you know, planning for. We absolutely have to suggest to the city council that what, what we're doing now is not appropriate. It is not, it's not feasible for the future. It is going to get us hung up in all kinds of problems until we understand, till we have somebody study this community from top to bottom and say, okay, this is what we think. These are the options for each one of the zoning areas. Looking at all the, the dreams that are being created to solve problems. And say, look, these are what your options are, but these are what your restrictions are. And, uh, I'm going to propose that to the city council. And, um, because I, I frankly, I'm getting so frustrated after, you know, living in this community for as long as I have. And we just keep ignoring it as if it's going to just, you know, solve itself. It is not going to solve itself. It's going to take some very creative thinking, um, for us to be able to get out of the situation that we are now and be able to progress into the future. This is not a short-term problem. You all know that. This is a long-term pro- program that needs to be thoroughly analyzed and then brought before the community and discussed about what direction we want to go. Because some things we're going to have to give up and other things, um, we can find terrific solutions for, I'm sure. But, um, that's a comment that I made at the, at the workshop of the planning commission. Uh, I think it was last week and, uh, the week before. And, um, and I firmly believe that because it, it's just confounds me. Every meeting we go to, we talk about this, that, and the other thing. But no one wants to talk about the devil in the room back there because it's such a humongous issue. So I just, I just say that to you that in planning all of this, also don't try to find a real simple Band-Aid solution for parking. Cause I don't honestly believe there is one. And, um, we need to do some real heavy duty lifting and thinking about how we're going to get to where we really want to be.
So you're going to bring that up. You've got one council member here who I think has heard you loud and clear. And you're going to continue to bring that up. Um, can I just ask the folks over there if we have anyone on Zoom who's any? Okay. All right. Thank you. So we can stay in the room for now.
I, I agree that parking, if we go with, um, just extrapolating history, is a nightmare. And it's already bad and it can only get worse. Except, um, we just recently on a book we're working on, on how cities solve problems. We got to talk to the folks in Hoboken, New Jersey, which it turns out is a very high-end suburb of Manhattan. I didn't realize that. It didn't used to be, but it is now. And the first thing you see on their website is don't bring your car. And this isn't Hoboken, but on the other hand, one of the reasons somebody could live in Hoboken and not have a car is things like Uber and Robo taxis and other things that are, some are which are already here and more are coming. So whatever plans we make about housing here and whatever assumptions we want to make about parking, I think we have to recognize the world is changing. And, um, I mean, my grandchildren are a good example of people in their twenties who have no interest whatsoever in owning a car. And they grew up in suburbs in Saratoga, but they have no interest in owning a car. Why would I want to own a car? What a stupid thing to do. And when the first time I heard about this housing element was from Karen Felito in the fall of 22. And I, after I bloviated against it for 10 minutes, she said, would you like some facts? And that's when she planted a seed in my head that the future doesn't have to be the same as the present or the past. And car ownership is something that is definitely changing. So it's a thought. It is a serious problem. And, and I want to put in a plug also that we're looking for more revenue in the city. I don't understand why we don't charge visitors for parking like Monterey does. Uh, it can be done very efficiently, very cleanly. We don't need any parking meters. It's all things you can do on your phone. Um, and I think the city would be, uh, well advised to consider that as an additional source, bringing in some cash.
You've got, you've got one council member here who's going to absorb all this and try to, yeah, we're, we're close to the end of our time. In fact, we're just five minutes over. So I just, before we totally disband, I just wanted to take it back to the planning commission and see if there's any final thoughts or questions or of course, we're open books here. So we're always available to get challenged or questioned or talked to about any of this. We're just exploring as we go. But is there any final thoughts on you, from you guys? We're very, very grateful that you were here.
Yeah.
Really very grateful. Um, okay, but just, please stay in touch. What are we? Oh, those worksheets. So if you had a chance to fill out while you were listening and talking, that's great. If, and then please just leave them behind on the, um, seats. If not, just drop them off at city hall anytime. Um, and, uh, just think it over and we really do appreciate any input you have. Thank you very much, everybody.